All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is, of course, the zoning board of adjustment meeting, so hopefully everyone's in the right place. So my name is, again, Jayman Kara, and I am acting as chair. Directly to my right is our vice chair, Josh Neely, and then we have a member, J.P. Boucher, member Robert Shaw, member Steve Linell, and alternate Andrew Sylvia. We have a full board with us tonight, so unless somebody needs to recuse himself, all the members will be voting, but the alternates can participate in all of the discussions. So tonight, we have requests for a variance and two special exceptions. Generally, a special exception is a use that is allowed by the ordinance if certain conditions are met. A variance is an exception to the ordinance that is allowed if the board finds, it's an appeal, actually, and it can be approved if the board finds that it is not contrary to the public interest, that it is within spirit and intent of the ordinance, that substantial justice would be done, and there would be no diminution of surrounding property values, and owing to special conditions in the property, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship. In all cases, it's the burden of the applicant to prove all of those points. The order of business is that each applicant will, I'll read the case into the record, and each applicant will come forward to the podium, state his or her name and address, and then present the case to the board. Each applicant has up to 15 minutes to present the case. Afterward, anybody wishing to speak in favor of the application may come forward and has up to five minutes to speak to the board, to address the board. After everybody who is speaking in favor has had a chance, then anybody with questions, concerns, or oppositions also has up to five minutes. Same process, come forward to the mic, state your name and address. All comments are addressed to the board, so there's kind of no crosstalk between folks in the audience. And then once all the folks who have had questions, concerns, or opposition have had a chance to speak, and it doesn't look like we're going to see a whole lot of that tonight, at least not yet, then the applicant has up to five minutes for rebuttal. And then, following that, one person who had, in opposition, could come forward and speak for up to five minutes again. The board, of course, can ask questions of the applicants and may ask questions of anyone addressing the board. But after all the testimony has been received, we close public input and bring it back to the board. The board will then deliberate, and the board may decide to either grant or deny the application tonight, or may continue it to a future meeting if necessary because additional information, perhaps, might be needed. So I think with that, I'm going to, and I don't think I also mentioned that to my left is Mr. Carter Fox, deputy planning manager, so I'm sorry about that, Carter. Are there any changes to the agenda for this evening?
No, there are not.
If not, then I am going to start off by calling the roll. Mr. Neely.
Present.
Mr. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Present.
Mr. Linell.
Present.
Mr. Sylvia.
Present.
And I am present also, Mr. Mencara. All right, so I'm going to proceed by reading the first case into the record. So this is the application of De far, Ducharme Family Revocable Trust of 2023. CEO Dennis and Diane Ducharme, trustees, Pathway Homes, Inc., and Kevin Allard, the applicant. Properties at 67 Manchester Street, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 6, to allow a duplex, which is a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot that's in the RA zone in Ward 3.
Hi. Thank you, and good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Chisholm. I'm with Keach Nordstrom Associates, where the engineers and surveyors are record for the project. I'm joined by Kevin Allard of Pathway Homes, Inc., who is the applicant. As you mentioned, the project before you tonight is a special exception application for a proposed duplex at 67 Manchester Street. The property is currently undeveloped. It's about 16,600 square feet in area. It's currently a nice, you know, lawn and landscaped area that has a, pretty much, a level buildable pad right kind of in the middle of the property, and then it starts to, topography starts to increase as you go up towards the rear of the property, just some others in the back. It enjoys 177 feet of frontage on, all on Manchester Street, and, as I mentioned, is very suitable for development. The plan, proposed plan for the duplex development is a total footprint of about 2,400 square feet. Each unit will be one half of the building, and each one will have about a little over 2,000 square feet of livable area in it. It'll be two floors. The first floor will consist of garage, kitchen, living space, things of that nature, and then on the second floor, each will have two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a home office. The property is situated in the RA urban residence zoning district, which allows duplexes as a special, as long as the special exception criteria are met. I will touch on each of those five criteria now. The first criteria is description of the proposal. I think in this case, it's a pretty straightforward application. This isn't some complicated, you know, commercial development that requires a special exception for the use. It's just simply a duplex, small-scale residential development. The second is a description of the physical size of the building in comparison to others in the area. We did mention and list a couple of properties in the immediately adjacent buildings in terms of square footages. Some of those range from just under 2,000 square feet in total area to just under 4,000 square feet. If you zoom out a little bit and look at the homes in the surrounding area, there's a wide variety of not only architecture in terms of area, but also, you know, levels, stories, what the buildings look like, all of those things. There's some older, you know, smaller homes that are single-family, or, yeah, single-family homes that have a single level, as well as some older homes that are a little bit bigger, have three floors, for example, and more square footage. There's really no consistency for the area. I will say that the footprint of 2,400 square feet and having two floors, I would say, from our opinion, certainly fits in with everything else that's out there. The third criteria is that there's sufficient parking. Four parking spaces are required for two duplex units. There's one space in each garage and one space in each driveway, which will provide the required parking. The fourth is to ensure that there will be no traffic congestion or impacts to pedestrian safety. There is a sidewalk currently along Manchester Street on our side of the development. That's going to remain intact, other than the couple of new driveways that are going to be cut in. Obviously, there are safety standards associated with those driveways. DPW has a whole process, you know, as you apply for a driveway permit and building permit and things like that, to make sure you have adequate site distance, and that, you know, pedestrian safety is accounted for in the design. So they do a very nice job of ensuring that those standards are met. In terms of traffic, we obviously have no reason to believe that this is going to overburden the area. You know, it's, like I said, it's a pretty well-developed area. This is one of the last remaining lots, undeveloped, and it's hard to say that a new two-family dwelling would, would overburden that. The final criteria is to ensure that the proposal will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the zoning district or the immediate neighborhood. This particular stretch of Manchester Street's a little bit of a mixed bag. There are a couple of two-family developments, including one directly next door at 65 Manchester Street. The architectural style, as I kind of alluded to earlier, is also a mix. There's some new mixing with some old. So as you drive down the street, you're not looking at the same style of house, or, you know, it wasn't all developed at the same time. Some things have been rebuilt over the years, things of that nature, so it does have a little bit of character and uniqueness in that sense. If you kind of zoom out even a little bit more and go about 1,200 feet in either direction, there's a number of different uses in the area. On one side, you have Greeley Park. There's also the Bow View Apartment Building, which is a 17-unit building. A little bit closer to the property and across the street is the church, St. Christopher Academy. And then as you kind of continue down towards Holman Stadium, there's some other things, including, you know, a local favorite, which is Janot's Store there. So those are the criteria. You know, really, the other part of the story is, this is an oversized lot. It could definitely be subdivided and meet all of the dimensional requirements to be split into two lots, has adequate frontage area with all of those things. The problem with that is that the shape of it is relatively unique in that it's a triangle. If you were to put a lot line right down the middle, you would lose a very good chunk of buildable land because you'd have the associated side yard setback with, you know, each property. So to develop this in a way that would be meaningful, and that I think makes a lot of sense in getting the true yield out of the property, I think the duplex really makes a lot of sense from a market standpoint. Pathway Homes has done their research and found that this is a very desirable style of development, and they think there's definitely a good market for this here in Nashua. You know, obviously, given the housing situation in not just Nashua, but in southern New Hampshire, demand for this sort of thing is very high. So that's, that's pretty much, I guess, the pitch here. The one thing I would like to point out is, obviously, this is our first step in the process. As I mentioned, we do have to secure building permits, driveway permits, other things. This particular architectural style and building plan is definitely the desired, you know, choice of the applicant, although we do just want to make the board aware, there may be changes necessary as we kind of go through those processes to make sure that we're addressing all of the codes and things like that. For example, I could see, instead of the, you know, the garages being kind of condensed in the middle, we could split them on either end of the building, if it makes more sense from DPW's perspective, to line up with Gordon Drive, or, you know, kind of put a little bit of separation between the two. So our goal is to work with the city and the different departments, obviously, to ensure that it's a cohesive and, you know, well-thought-out development. So I just want to make sure that the board's aware that there may be changes that, you know, relatively speaking, that may change the look and feel of this a little bit, but overall, it's going to maintain about the same mass and size and style of development and everything like that that you see on the plans here tonight. So I'll keep it short. With all that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Neely.
First of all, thank you for the complete packet. We always appreciate that. It was pretty well done. What's, what's the, really, what's the root cause for why not, why not putting a single-family house there? I mean, we wouldn't even be here if you were doing a single-family.
As opposed, one single-family home?
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's just, it's kind of hard. Well, first of all, let me explain the backstory of the lot a little bit. The Ducharme family owns a property next door. This lot is in common ownership with that, although a separate property. They've held on to it for a very long time. I think they're just finally at a point where they're ready to sell. It came on the market, and, you know, a lot of clients come to me, developer clients of mine, and they say, you know, what can you do with this? And I say, well, that's big enough to be two lots, you know. There, it's almost a shame at this point in time to take out yield that isn't, you know, that if you can get something that's reasonable, it's almost a shame to kind of let that go by, given, you know, the housing shortage and crisis and things like that that we have. I think the main driver for this is the applicant has just done the research and really feels like there's a strong demand for this style of house, and it just seems to make sense with everything else that exists out there. So I think it's, it's really just, you know, he's going through this extra step because he believes in it that much, I guess, is what I would say at the end of the day.
Mr. Sylvia.
Following up on that, from a developer one of view, would it be financially difficult to have just a one-family versus a two-family?
I don't think so. I think the economics of that are a little interesting in the sense that, you know, because of what this lot is and the cost per acre and all of those things, you'd have to do a pretty substantial house. I think he's looking to do something a little bit more reasonable. You know, duplexes typically sell at a lower price point than a comparative single-family home. So I think there's a benefit to, you know, the housing supply in Nashua if this were to get approved as well, in the sense that it may be a little bit more reasonable for that person who's looking to jump into homeownership, or someone downsizing or something of that nature. But yeah, it would have to be a pretty substantial house to make the economics of it work, given the price of the property.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anybody wishing to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Is this a letter in favor?
It's a letter. I think it should be in your package, a handwritten letter.
Yes. Yes, this is a letter from the owners, but I'll read it into the record. This letter is in regards to 67 Manchester Street, the meeting for this evening at 6:30 PM, City Hall, et cetera. "We, Dennis and Diane Ducharme, totally approve to allow a duplex, two-family dwelling, to be built on this property behind ours at 10 Menadnock Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064," and then they provide their contact information. We do also have a letter from the butters across the street, and I'll read this into the record as well. "To the Nashua Zoning Board, first of all, thank you very much for allowing us to send an email with our thoughts regarding the proposed new duplex development on Manchester Street. As the owners of 67 Manchester Street in Nashua, we are located directly across from the parcel of land that has been sold and is now petitioning for a special exception to allow a duplex on the lot. The area is predominantly single-family homes, with a few duplex lots located on Manchester Street. However, most of the existing duplexes have the appearance of single-family homes, while this will look more like a true duplex. While having a single-family home would undoubtedly be preferred, the most important thing is to avoid having tenants, as creating this as a rental property would definitely bring down the home value of houses along this area, including our own. Secondly, according to the plans, the proposed driveway is not located directly across from our own driveway in Manchester Street. We would like to continue with that plan if either a duplex or a single-family home is to be created. We do not want one directly across from our driveway, as this may create potential traffic issues with our own property. Unfortunately, due to a recent hand surgery that occurred yesterday, I'm not going to be able to attend this meeting in person. Please do not see my absence as a lack of interest in the decision, but only as a necessary absence for my healing. Sincerely, Leslie Burnham and Tim Myers." And you may wish to respond.
Yes. Absolutely, yeah. So I see that property. I think, you know, speaking to, obviously, kind of the location of the driveway, their driveway is just north of Gordon Street, which is the street across the way. Where we're proposing the driveways now is a little bit south of Gordon Street. I don't see us going north of Gordon Street. I could potentially see DPW wanting us to align with Gordon Street, but not taking it further than that. That may make sense. But yeah, I don't, I don't see that really happening, obviously, with this plan in terms of lining it up with their driveway, so glad to hear they're on board with that. In terms of what the plan for this is, this, these are definitely for-sale properties. These will not be, the applicant does not intend to, to build and to rent them out. Obviously, I suppose anyone could buy them and, you know, individually rent them out. There's no, no stopping that, right? But that's not the intent of the developer. His, his whole thing is to build and sell them, so just know that that definitely isn't what the goal of this is at the end of the day. And I think that covers their couple of concerns there.
I think there are other concerns with the appearance.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, the architectural style. Yeah, as I mentioned, it, you know, there are, there's a lot of different things going on. If you drive down Manchester Street, as I mentioned, I mean, there's a number of newer developments and houses that have kind of spurred, you know, spawned off of Manchester Street. You definitely get some newer, like colonial-style homes and some things like that. So it's, it truly is a mixed bag. You know, I, I personally think that this architectural style will be okay in this area. I don't see the need to kind of make it look like two older family homes or anything like that. I don't think that necessarily makes or breaks the deal, if that makes sense. You know, again, I think the building proposed has definitely got a little bit of architectural character to it. It's going to be good materials that are used on this. This isn't just some cheap building that's being thrown up that's a box. It's got a little bit of characters with some jigs and jogs. So, you know, beauty's a little bit in the eye of the beholder, as we all know, but certainly feel like this is not a place by any means.
Thank you. Any more questions from the board? All right. If not, then I'm going to, you know, close public input and bring it back to the board.
Thoughts?
Start with Mr. Linell.
That's okay. I'll beat you by half a second, okay. This is my neighborhood, more or less, and I walk by, walk and drive by this lot a lot. And, and I appreciate knowing the history because I'm saying, okay, if this, you know, how did, why is this so late to the infill market, which, it's surprising, but now I know the history of it, that makes sense. It's true, there is a tremendous variety of building styles along Manchester Street, and I think that this would, would fit in, so I have no objection.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I was just going to note, similar to Mr. Linell, as far as, I am in support. I don't see any issues with this. I think we got some good explanations, especially to do with the nature of this kind of, you know, basically triangular type of lot, and I think the argument about doing two separate homes makes sense. I think it would either maybe force the homes to be built in a way that would kind of fit oddly, maybe almost triangular shape the homes themselves, or have to start dealing with dimensional, you know, relief where it shouldn't be necessary. So I do think there was reasonable thought given to all that, the fact that the lot could support the full subdivision without any, any necessary variances. You know, also then, further, I think, makes sense to me that doing the duplex, there's, it's not like there's actually creation truly of any greater density than what somebody could do otherwise. I also just, this is not so much about, I just want to make the comment because this comes up a lot of times, and it's more just, I understand the butters' concern about rentals, but the reality is, that's not something that we judge on about. The only thing where it really comes to play that I can think of offhand is much more about, like, when we're dealing with ADUs, which actually we have coming up, I believe, tonight, but where, you know, you have to have the owner, at least in one of the residences. But, but yeah, the duplex, I mean, the ownership and rental state, there's nothing we are going to control with that, or even really are allowed to. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there. I mean, I appreciate that that's not the intent of the proposal or the developer, but it was noted, like, somebody could buy one or either unit and, and still rent them out, so, and there's nothing we can, you know, say, oh, you can't do that, so. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. It's mostly just kind of for, mostly people's education, information, that the board is constrained in those sorts of ways.
Exactly. Mr. Neely, did you have, were you raising, were you pulling the mic forward?
I appreciate that. So I'm actually probably going in the other direction. I do think that this lot is suitable for development, as, as the applicant was speaking to. When I did my site drive-by, it was actually before we received this, this letter in opposition, and I drove south down Manchester Street, and looking at the architecture, while it is varied, I could not see any multi-family homes leading up to this property. They had noted in the application that 65 is a multi-family property. Honestly, just by looking at it, and I sat across from it quite a bit, I couldn't tell just by looking at it, it was one of the noted property that, you know, once I stared at it, I realized it was a multi-family, but there's nothing that jumps out at you as, as being multi-family. If this was located two blocks to the north, I would have been a hard no. I was still conflicted coming in here tonight, after, after going through this and reading the packet and listening to the folks do the testimony. But I just have a problem with, with criteria number five. I do believe this is a bit out of character with the district. I think it's a few blocks away, because this is going to so much look like a duplex. So while it does sound like the board is probably going to vote in favor, I'm not in favor at this time.
Mr. Sylvia.
Yeah, and in regard to the criteria regarding traffic, Manchester Street's a fairly well-traveled street, so the addition of four cars, so there's four parking spaces, probably wouldn't be a significant impact on that, and given the fact that the applicant has some flexibility in where they can put the garage and driveway, that can add to the ability to lessen the impact of heat.
Yeah, I would say, I do support the application. This is also my neighborhood. I go by this lot every day. I've wondered the same thing also, you know, kind of how come this is still vacant? But, but I do support the application because I do think that a two-family is consistent with the character of the area. The density, the lot does allow for two units in terms of density, so it comes down to style. Might I prefer a different style? Yes, I, I think I probably would. But I would also note, if you go a little bit, granted, the houses on either side is one thing, but going a little bit closer towards Janot's, you do have older, but you do have side-by-side duplexes there. They're just 100 years old, but they're, you know, very clear in their character. So I think, for those reasons, I do support the application.
I'm going to support the application.
Excellent. So would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw.
The application is the Ducharme Family Revocable Trust of 2023, care of Dennis and Diane Ducharme, trustees, owners. Pathway Homes Incorporated, care of Kevin Allard, applicant. The address is 67 Manchester Street, Sheet 65, Lot 214. The request is for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 6, to allow a duplex, two-family dwelling on a vacant lot. This is in the RA zone, Ward 3. So as noted, the requested use is listed as a special exception, which I just had read as part of the application. The second criteria is that the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. That was addressed by the applicant. There is an existing sidewalk. The driveways will, are proposed, but the applicant is also willing to work with DPW. If there's any beneficial alterations to that from a safety perspective, there's no indication that total, basically, four allowed cars for this duplex would, would add any significant impact for traffic, despite the fact that, I think, as noted, most people recognize Manchester Street as a fairly busy roadway. There's no indication that the requested use will overload public water drainage sewer systems or any other municipal systems. And basically, again, just the, essentially, the addition of this duplex is not a significant add to the existing infrastructure. The special regulations, there are none specific other than meeting the five criteria, and the requested use will not impair the integrity, be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood in which it is located, nor be detrimental to the health morals or welfare of the residents of the city. The board did discuss and noted that there was some opposition from one of the butters regarding concerns about the, the appearance of the duplex, but the applicant noted, and the board also felt that there is a fairly mixed character to this district with even uses beyond just the residential in, in the immediate area, and there are other multi-family homes as well. And with, for those reasons, I move to approve this special exception.
Do we have a second? Mr. Linell. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Mr. Neely in opposition. Your variance has been granted. I think, as you probably are aware, there is a 30-day window of appeal, so just be mindful of that, but you are free to proceed.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Mr. Neely?
Yes.
That was a special exception, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you said variance right now.
Oh, did I just, I thought I just said there was a 30-day window of appeal.
Well, you said, well, it's a variance was approved now.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You're right, I did. Let, let the record stand corrected.
I'm sure the applicant knows.
I think they realize what they applied for. No, thank you for that. All right, going to read the next case. This is the application of Bruce and Deborah Johnson. The owners, Bruce W. Johnson is the applicant, 16 Bedford Street, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct an accessory dwelling unit, also known as an in-law, above an existing garage that's in the R9 zone in Ward 1. And I believe you are speaking to the application, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address.
My name is Bruce Johnson, Bruce W. Johnson. My wife's Deborah Johnson. She also owns the property, 16 Bedford Street, Nashua. It's got a garage 24 by 30 attached to the breezeway, and we want to remove the roof or whatever, go straight up, be no changes to the outside of the building, except for a outside stairway on the back of the building. That'll be the only thing. And the other access will be through our house above the breezeway. We want to add our, move our laundry room upstairs, and it'll be a hallway through that and a doorway going into the, the new ADU or in-law apartment. My daughter will be coming down, northern New Hampshire. Other than that, there's no, be one car coming in addition, no changes as far as the roadway or the outside, everything remains the same. No business, nothing at all.
And I realize it was signed in the application, but you did have a chance to look at the affidavit with the special conditions, and you agree to all of those?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I am guessing there does not appear that there's anybody here to speak in favor or opposition, and I do not believe we've received any correspondence in favor or opposition. So unless you have anything else you want to address to the board, or if the board has any questions of the applicant, you can be seated, and we'll close public input. All right, take it back to the board. Thoughts? Mr. Shaw.
In full support is is one of those that seems to me that can't be much more straightforward. So criteria met, there's nothing special about it, and yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else? Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Shaw. And I, looking through the neighborhood, there's, you know, I see some garages that were built up, and I don't think this will look out of character at all.
Yeah, I would agree. Any other thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll go.
Mr. Lionel.
Well, you can get the next one. I want to get this out of the way.
You want to be easy one?
I don't know, is it easy? Okay. Bruce W. and Deborah S. Johnson, owners, Bruce W. Johnson, applicant, sixteen Bedford Street, Sheet E, Lot three ten, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash fifteen, Table fifteen dash one, number three, to construct an accessory dwelling unit above the existing garage. This is in the R nine zone, Ward one. In consideration of the special exception, the board finds that the requested use is listed as a special exception in the use matrix, and the board doesn't see any evidence that the requested use will create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The use should not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or other municipal system. The board finds that any of the special regulations are fulfilled. The owner has signed the affidavit that all of the requirements for this special exception are fulfilled, and the board finds that the requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood in which it is located, nor be detrimental to the health morals or welfare of the residents of the city. So I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Is there a second? Mr. Shaw. All right, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your hand. And no one is in opposition, so your special exception request has been granted. I think, as you heard, there is a thirty-day window of appeal, although I think it's probably unlikely, given the lack of opposition. All right, next case. Max Properties LLC, the owners, at ten East Pearl Street, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash sixteen, Table sixteen dash three, for minimum land area, five thousand seven hundred and ninety-six square feet existing, six thousand nine hundred and seventy square feet required, to convert a building with one residential unit and one commercial unit into two residential units. That's in the RC zone, Ward four. If you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record.
Yeah, good evening, members of the board. My name is Michael Afavor, address sixty-six Hawthorne Drive in Bedford, New Hampshire. And to begin, just a description of the building. So the upstairs unit is currently a residential unit. It's four rooms with one bedroom. Downstairs is currently an office with seven rooms that will be converted to a three-bedroom apartment. There's currently adequate off-street parking for four cars with an additional four-car detached garage with the available driveway, so this complies with the off-street parking requirements of the ordinance. To go through the zoning variance criteria, this will not be contrary to the public interest. The neighborhood is starting from the beginning of East Pearl Street to Quincy Street. After Quincy Street, the properties primarily become all commercial. The properties in neighborhoods are primarily duplexes and multifamily, with some office and mixed use and residential. The proposed use would be a two-unit building, and it will not alter the character of the neighborhood, but will rather fit right in with the characteristics of the neighborhood. Since there are adequate parking on site, there will be no threat to public safety or welfare. Item number two, the use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. This neighborhood currently is an RC zone, which does permit duplexes and multifamily buildings. Office is actually not a permitted use, so by allowing this use, we'll be returning this property to the use that is permitted by which is within the spirit of the ordinance. Item three, substantial justice will be done. No harm will be done to the public as it will not overburden the use of the property. What we really don't need in Nashua is more vacant office space, so we feel that additional housing, especially in that area of Nashua, is the highest and best use of the property. There will be no diminution of property values, so this fits right in with the neighborhood as it's predominantly multifamily currently. As a real estate agent for the last seven years as well, you know, the data can show as well that it will probably increase the property data as multifamily is trending higher than office space. And item number five, requiring that this property to remain as in one office and one residential unit will result in an unnecessary hardship. So as shown in the neighborhood density chart in Exhibit A, do you all have Exhibit A?
Yes.
Okay. All but one of the properties in the neighborhood are non-conforming with the respective square footage of on a per-unit basis. That information comes right from the city assessors cards and are available online. In fact, every one of these non-conforming properties are more undersized than what we're proposing here today. It would not be fair and reasonable to require that the property conform with the density requirement of the ordinance when all but one other property in the neighborhood don't conform. The special condition of this property is just that, it's situated within a neighborhood and is surrounded by other properties that do not conform to the density requirement of the ordinance. Seeing that we have a short agenda here, I won't bore you guys with kind of past precedent, but there are quite a few cases that came before the board here of similar requests. So here, if you have any questions, concerns, happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Neely.
How long has the office section been vacant?
So it's actually still currently occupied by our company, and we're intending to move out of that location to a to a new spot.
And have you, was there any consideration to trying to attract another commercial tenant, or did you just take a look at it and say, hey, we need some housing stock, let's just make the conversion?
Yeah, with the upstairs unit, it's kind of a unique situation, being like specifically where it is, it just doesn't fit with that area of the neighborhood where you'd have one kind, if you look at it, it looks like a residential building. So it's just a little awkward, even while we were there operating it, you've got a tenant living upstairs while you're working down below, so we just think it's a better fit for the neighborhood and and the residents living there.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Clearly, there's no one here to speak one way or the other, and I don't believe we received any correspondence.
Nope.
All right, so you're free to sit down, and we'll close public comment and bring it back up to the board. Thoughts? Mr. Neely.
So I'm in favor of this application. As the applicant just noted a few minutes ago, I mean, it looks residential. When I drove by, I had no thought process that there was an office inside there, so I think the converting it back to all residential is in everybody's best interest. It was also at the beginning of his testimony that this is actually must have had a variance before to bring in the commercial. So that that whole neighborhood is, it's a fascinating neighborhood, you know, it's an older neighborhood, quite a mix of of commercial and residential, and and really there's there's no reason, in my mind, not to take it back to full residential. They have more than enough parking. No parking on the street will be necessary. I do believe it's a no-brainer, so for those reasons, I'm in I'm in favor.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I'm in favor, and I also thought the the chart that was supplied with the density of all the other properties there on that part of Pearl Street was very compelling, and I would, yeah, so I think that was very significant as well. But it's going to become more conforming in terms of use, and the density will be actually, you know, less significant than almost any other property in that area, so it makes a lot of sense to me.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just add that I also agree, it's consistent with the density. In fact, it's a lower density, I think, as you noted, and it's it's really one of the few properties that actually has plenty of parking. Most don't in the neighborhood. I suspect some will probably take advantage of the extra parking on this one. So if there's no other comments, does anybody want to make a motion? Well, I figured it was going to be Mr. Boucher, but I guess he's backing off.
Well, I'll be honest with you, this is a little bit more difficult than.
All right, I mean, if if anybody else wants to, fine. If nobody else wants to, I can do it. Okay, go ahead.
No, I agree with your with your assessment.
It's not what I'm afraid of, I tried, but I'm afraid we're not going to do it.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Max Properties LLC, owner, ten East Pearl Street, Sheet thirty-five, Lot thirty-nine, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash one-six, Table one-six dash three, for minimum land area, five thousand seven hundred and ninety-six square feet existing, six thousand nine hundred and seventy square feet required to convert a building with one residential unit and one commercial unit into two residential units. This is in the RC zone in Ward four. We, the board, after discussion, has found that the variance would not be contrary to public interest due to the fact that this will fit the general tone and tenor of this area. There's quite a bit of mix of commercial and residential, and we do have a need for residential right now. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed, as noted by the applicant. This used to be two residential units, this would be converting it back to to the way it used to be. Granting the variance would do substantial justice in that the applicant did testify that it is better to have two residential units in this building as they are currently the the commercial tenant. They have run into some interesting situations with having a residential tenant upstairs, so the substantial justice as the owner of the building as well as to move their company out and bring in two residential units. We have no reason to believe that the values of the surrounding properties would be negatively diminished, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship due to the fact that this building is in a desirable section of town. We do have a housing shortage, and this area, excuse me, this building used to be two residential units and is now had been converted to commercial and looking to bring that back. There is a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision. The proposed use is reasonable because it is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. The board did have additional conversation that there is more than enough parking for two full residential units there. The unit already looks like a residential unit, there is no signage out front, so really most of the neighborhood would not realize that the changes are occurring, and this is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Mr. Boucher, second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Variance is granted unanimously. Again, as you've heard earlier this evening, there is a thirty-day window of appeal, but you are free to proceed.
Do you want to enjoy the rest of the night?
I hear you. Okay, so did everybody have a chance to look at the agenda for the upcoming meeting?
Yes.
Anybody see any projects originally?
No.
I did not either. I will throw out there, I am not going to be able to be here for the next meeting, so hopefully we will have everyone else in attendance, and hopefully you won't mind taking the gavel. Mr. Neely. So that takes us to approval of the minutes. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes?
Yes.
Anybody see any changes or corrections?
Mr. Patri today.
I know. Someone's got to do it.
Someone's going to do it. I saw two things. Page three, on the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, tenth line, requesting one, a special exception in accordance with from. I think that's mean, that's meant to be from. It's on number two.
Well, that's in the description of the.
Yeah. With. I think it's meant to be from, I think.
Except that that was how it was published.
Know how it was published?
Yeah, so we shouldn't.
Okay.
Right, it is typo, but you're right, it was published that way still.
Okay. And then, I just want to change the, the notice, too. The other thing, on page six, there's a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot shoreland buffer, and shoreland should be lowercase, unless it's a particular shoreland, I don't think it is.
Okay. That's in the paragraph that begins with Earl Blatchford. All right, any other changes, comments? If not, can we get a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-fifth? Mr. Shaw, second. I'll give it to Mr. Boucher.
Give it to Mr. Boucher, yes.
All those in favor, raise your hands. All right, and that is unanimous. I believe that takes us to bylaws.
Yes, I have, I think, I think the bylaws were sent out. Usually what we do is we'll.
Yes.
Have the chair and vice chair sign the back page.
Okay.
So I have two original copies here, so.
Excellent.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, if you want to sign these, and clerk, I guess, is me.
My only thing is just in the page three, bottom page three, and then new section O, we used the modified section O. I think that the capitalized insert tabling language, I think, should be struck.
Yeah, we'll get rid of that. I don't know why that.
And the highlighting, yes.
Yeah, we'll get rid of that. Unfortunately, it's not on the page that you signed, so that's the last page. So if you want to.
Okay.
Sign the last page, and we'll make the, we'll get rid of that.
But should, I think we should take.
Should we take a vote?
Yes. Officially approve.
Officially approve them, that's right, because they're laying over, so. So yes, would anybody like to make that?
I move to approve the the adjusted bylaws as as provided to us with the one-noted change to strike the insert tabling language from Section eight-O.
Looks like also Section nine also is.
Second by Mr. Lionel, but yes, Section nine also highlighted, you're right.
The yellow highlighted area.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't concerned about the highlighting so much as the words, but yeah.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Nobody is opposed, unanimous. So should should their revision date be today?
It should be today.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just change that as well. Oops, I'm sorry.
You could just cross it out, and put, if you want to be, if you want that to be one of the signed copies, you can sign your name and just put.
Do you have another copy?
Uh, no, I don't. It's okay. We're going to put that in file, and no one will see it.
You'll make copies of the other one.
No one will probably look at it until it's time to do the next update.
No one, no one will even see it.
Right, you can sign both of these. We'll just make copies of this one.
Sure. And I assume with the change, JP is not signing this, right? I'll sign it.
Correct.
Covering my job.
Your duties are.
Your role is.
A null.
Doge. I mean, that's helping all of our heads.
All right, so nothing else on the agenda? Anything anybody else?
So again, I don't want to make a big deal about it, but these are great. I think I'm still, and I think Mr. Shaw's on it, too, there's still a little struggle with Section five. I don't know if there's anything that can help us with that. Again, we've been on board for a while, I just, and I know that we have to do this, but I don't know if, overthinking it, or is it, is it, you know, I don't want to, you know, I want to make sure that we are doing what we need to do so that we don't put ourselves in any jeopardy.
There's the or there, so you could do, it's, it's.
Right.
What are the others that you could do? You don't have to read, you don't have to have, see the big.
It's hard to tell which, you know, whether whether one of the the versions is more applicable than the other.
It can be, yes.
And I think the applicant really should put that in their in their application, which one they're going for when they fill out the application, but a lot of the applicants we have.
Are probably that clear about it themselves, right?
Right, they they wouldn't know what to choose either, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's not.
The easiest thing.
In this case, I think it was definitely A, I should say, in the last variance case, and they they didn't really, and maybe that's something we could correct in the, you know, or fix in the applications, because in the application form, it doesn't. application form, it doesn't provide.
We can beef that up.
Right, so, so it doesn't provide the A in the option, so the applicant really can address, I think if we do that.
We'll take a look at it.
It might help. I think the applicant tried, because what they tried to say was literal enforcement of the ordinance resulted in necessary hardship, blah, 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 blah. I, I think what they were essentially saying here is that, they went on to say, requiring the applicant to conform to the density requirement of the ordinance would not be fair and reasonable. They weren't using the exact wording, but I think they were, they were leaning towards A. I think that's what they were working with, because B is really hard to meet. B is basically saying, if you don't give me the variance, I can't use my property, you know, realistically. That happens sometimes, but I think almost everybody's, but it is, it's, it's, it's awkward, especially on the fly, you know, to try to figure it out.
We, we can amend the application, I think that would be helpful, so then they, the applicant can put in what they think they're meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it would really help.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? So we are adjourned, I'm assuming we all agree, everybody's in favor. So we are adjourned at seven-twenty-one.